Good evening. It is Monday, July the 13th. This is the Norwood Planning Board Virtual Meeting. Thank you all for joining us. And we will start off with the members in the hour of 7 o'clock being with us. We have a presentation and I'll pass that mic to who's going to do it on behalf of them, Patrick.
So we have minutes first, followed by minor site plan review, A and R plan, and then we have the major site plan review for the Big Y.
Let's talk the minutes of the last meeting?
Yes.
Anybody have any additions or any deletions that we need for the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
A second.
You have a second, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we're going to do the roll call. Mr. Pachekowski.
Aye.
Mr. Sheen.
Mr., I was muted, I'm sorry. I did not get a copy of the minutes.
They were all included in the zip file, Joe.
I didn't get a chance to look at them then.
Okay.
Mr. Hatchey.
Aye.
Mr. Bamber.
Aye.
Chairman, aye. Joe, you good? You have a 4-0-1 abstention. You have a minor site plan review for 705 Washington Street?
So I'll just go over this. So 705, I'm just going to open a moment. I am going to just bring up the project file. Alright, so 705 Washington Street is a minor site plan approval for a sign within the Central Business District. The applicant, Carmen Bello, is proposing to install three signs, one primary facing Washington, and two secondary, one on the corner, one facing Day Street. So the, let me just, so this is the previous tenant. It was Karikowski and Associates. So just to kind of orient yourself to where this building is within the downtown. The primary sign is a gray background with blue lettering. It's 24 inches by 150 inches. The middle sign, which is on the corner, is a blue background with a golden lettering, 70 inches by 24 inches. And the sign facing Day Street is 130 inches by 24 inches. Just want to go to, sorry about this. So just within my review, all signs, so the primary sign comes to about 25 square feet. That is in compliance with zoning by law 6.2.16.2. The first secondary sign facing on the corner of the building comes in at a little, around 11.7 square feet. However, the second sign facing Day Street is, you know, being 130 inches by 24 inches, it comes in a little under 22 square feet, so it's 21.7 square feet. I just went over with Matt Walsh, the building inspector, just to make sure there was grandfathering and if anything like that was taking in place here. He agreed with me that because it's a new tenant, although the sign is taking the place of the previous sign, our bylaws stipulate that in section 6.2.16.4, secondary signs under no circumstance can be over 15 square feet, providing the applicant wanted to apply for a special permit or something like that. So is my recommendation to approve the signs in front of the board, with the exception of the Day Street facing sign, if the applicant were to reduce that to 15 square feet in total square footage. So that's my report.
Alright, so that would be approved. That would be approved. The right facing sign just needs to be no larger than 15 and a half square feet.
Yeah, so the one that's 24 by 130, if you could just reduce that to like, you know, seven and a half feet by two feet, I think that comes to 15 square feet, so.
Alright.
And then.
Yeah, everything's a direct replacement, so.
Yeah, yeah, that was the part that I just wanted to clarify with the building inspector, who's a zoning enforcement officer. We have similar situations where a sign for a tenant may be not, maybe pre-existing non-conforming, but because your tenant is changing over completely, it's a new tenant, that no longer is in place, so it would have to comply with new bylaws.
Alright, so 15 and a half is the maximum square foot?
15 square feet is the maximum square feet, yep.
Alright, and then we just need to make that change and then that will be approved?
Depending on what the board has to say.
Yep, alright.
Any comments from the members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Any, looking at the picture, I couldn't tell if there's any existing lighting there or will there be any lighting on the signs?
There is, there is pre-existing lighting. I don't think they plan on changing it, I think they plan on leaving it.
Is it internally lit or a drop down, a public?
What was that?
Is it, is it, I'm not familiar with the building, is it a drop down or is it?
It's kind of shy from the bottom, below it.
From the bottom up, okay.
Yeah, but we have nothing to do with that, all we are doing is just the signs.
Okay, alright. And Mr. Chairman, if they make that change to that secondary sign to comply with the 15 square foot by law, I have no other issues with it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sheen?
Thank you. I have no issues with it also. Is that something we could do tonight with a promise to take care of that? The size of that secondary sign?
Yeah, we can change that.
We can write that into the bill of inspection.
Yeah, so I can talk to the applicant and if we get a new proposal with the dimensions matching what the requirements are, I can have that before issuing the sign off to the building inspector.
Alright, perfect. We can email it to you tomorrow, the changes.
Alright.
Hatchey, any questions?
No questions. Mr. Pachekowski beat me to the lighting question. It looks like there's pre-existing lighting on the, on the, everything but the corner, correct?
Yes.
And I have no concerns so long as Patrick's suggestions are taken and I have no further questions.
I have no questions, nothing to add, as long as the dimensions are following the bylaw.
And the chairman is in agreement with the adjustments to be made. Okay, can I get a motion to approve contention on the changes?
Still moved?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, on the roll call, Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Pachekowski?
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
And the chairman says yes. Five zip.
Alright, so Brian, I'll talk to you tomorrow if we can get a new rendering and then once I have that, I can issue my letter of approval to yourself and the building inspector.
Oh yeah, that was the next question, when I would get the approval for it after we make the change, so. We'll be in touch tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Moving right along? You got an extra new agenda there, Patrick?
So we have an A and R plan for 750 Everett Street. This was discussed at our previous meeting. Let me just bring a file.
Mr. Chairman, we continue to have some background noise coming from someone in the virtual room. I recommend that everybody mute themselves unless they are being recognized to speak so that we can make sure that we can all hear and participate.
Mr. Chairman, so representing this project will be Sherry Clancy of National Development. So I'm just going to turn it over to her.
Yes, this is in connection with the site plan approval that was before the board last week. We are buying two lots that are at the corner of Everett Street and Downey Street and we are combining them to make one lot. And that is what is before the board this evening. This will be held in ownership, all these will be held in common ownership, these two lots.
And what does that have to do with the Amazon operation?
Well, it's just that we had looked at this and where those were two, where those lots were separate, there was a question that was raised by the planning board to say, would each lot in and of itself have to meet, individually meet requirements for the Vulcan dimensional open space and what have you? And it meets it when they're together, it does not meet it when they're separate. So we are combining them in order to make that in conformance with your bylaw.
Complies with the bylaw for the combination of the three lots?
The combination of those two lots, so that those two lots, the parking that's on those two lots then meets the open space requirements, meets the setback requirements, meets all the requirements in the Vulcan dimensional of your bylaw.
For that separate new lot, if you will?
Yes, yes.
What about the parking of vehicles?
The same, it conforms.
It's supposed to be a sunset as part of the agreement here, I believe.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, I thought that was a sunset agreement on this particular lot, you're doing away with the parking.
Are you referring to, are you referring to the parking for the auto dealership? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I am.
Yes, that's being sunset, we're done with that.
Okay, so what is this parcel going to be used for?
This is part of the new parking that's going to be used for the distribution facility. We're expanding the parking onto this site.
Okay, I'm a little confused, why isn't it combined with the larger parcel?
It's just the way we own it, we own it in two separate entities. It doesn't, I don't think it's required to be combined with the other parcel. It's just that if we were to look at this individually as two lots instead of one, then it was not meeting the open space requirement and once you combine them together, it does meet the open space requirement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Paul?
As part of the review for the project, I had questions about whether or not each individual parcel, so there were three, the warehouse that shows on the right of the plan, parcel 2A and 2B, which are owned by the Holtmans, and we have the parking and loading facilities for the warehouse on lots 2A and 2B. I asked the applicants whether each lot separately complies with all of the requirements of zoning. And I think that merging these two lots together, which was also a recommendation, helps them, gets them to the point where the warehouse lot complies with zoning and these two lots merged together comply with all the requirements of the zoning by law. I've reviewed the approval of that required plan and I believe it meets all of the requirements in the zoning by law. I'd recommend endorsement.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Just one, so all the existing buildings on the proposed lot 2C are going to be raised?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Sorry, no further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Bamber? Any questions?
What's the total acreage?
I can't actually read it, it's too small, I'm sorry to tell you.
It looks like 6.0.
It's around six, but I don't know the exact number.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? I have a motion to endorse.
Still moved?
Second.
And a second. We have a motion to endorse and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous? Okay, Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Mr. Pachekowski?
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Aye.
And the chairman is an aye. Five, nothing? Passes, thank you.
Alright, so next is major site plan review for Ford 20 to 442 Walpole Street. This is the redevelopment of the Big Y supermarket. Representing this project is Phil Mackey as well as Nathan Monahan of Bowler Engineering.
Okay, you want to start your presentation, gentlemen, thank you.
Yep, sure thing. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Phil Mackey, 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. It's Councilman on behalf of the applicant. I believe we also have several folks from Cedar Realty Trust, Charles Burkhardt, Casey Fennell. I'm not sure if I missed anyone, if I do, I apologize. And so what I propose to do with your permission is give a brief overview of the project as well as the design criteria for major site plan approval. Turn it over to Nate from Bowler Engineering to walk through a little more of the details and then we would like to wrap up our presentation with Charles Burkhardt giving you a Cedar Realty Trust perspective of property, the plans, and his conversations to date with several of the neighbors, etc. So with your permission, I will continue. I don't see anyone nodding no, it's a little bit different than Norwood Town Hall, but I think we'll get through this. So the shopping center and for the ease of everyone's identification, we're going to continue to call it Big Y Center because that's the store that we all know. But actually, it was developed back in 1963 by way of a special permit. Majority of the site actually sits in a manufacturing zone, which at a future meeting, we'll discuss further with your board as to whether or not that's really appropriate, but it's beyond the scope of tonight's discussion. The 1963 special permit was modified a bunch of, several times, the last of which was in 1991 with Helen Abdullah as the council for the applicants at the time. And since then, they have not had to apply for further zoning relief as the overall size of the plaza really hasn't changed. In 2006, Big Y replaced Panafford as the anchor tenant and continues to operate to this day. As I'm sure everyone is aware, the current Big Y is not what anyone would call a state-of-the-art supermarket at this point. And so in discussions last year between Cedar and Big Y, they agreed they would like to stay in Norwood, but they want to build as close to a prototypical store as possible, which has kicked off basically the process that brought us here today. What they are proposing, what Cedar is proposing, and again, I want to be clear on that, Cedar is the actual landlord, landowner of the plaza, is to remove a considerable portion of the back buildings that over the years have been basically tacked on to where the Planet Fitness is and the varying outbuildings or parcels, if you will, that were attached towards the, what is currently the grocery store. And in doing that, it frees up square footage that we can effectively rebuild a much more rectangular store with better loading, better circulation, pretty much better everything. So as we walk you kind of through, and Nate, I believe you're running the presentation, so I'm not sure what you're going to show there. But basically, as you come in the site, we're proposing a fairly significant change as far as landscaping goes, so that you're not just entering into a sea of pavement. On this particular plan, you can see kind of the red areas that we're removing pavement and adding some green space. And I'm not going to try and tell you that we're turning the parking lot into a park because that's not the truth, but we are absolutely making this a much better plaza for everybody, the tenants, the customers, the town, and Norwood. As you can see in the plan in front of you, it basically shows you what I'm talking about. Big Y turns into effectively a rectangular store, whereas right now, it looks well like something was built in 1963 and then added on to 15 times over 40 years. The parking lot itself, we have some constraints with. We have worked within those to the extent we can right now to add in islands and some landscaping. We have committed after this meeting to continue to work with the town planner and the town engineer to hopefully increase both landscaping and update the parking to an extent that everyone finds mutually acceptable. And there will be a significant redevelopment of the facade so that basically all of the stores look like you have a new plaza. And we actually believe at the end of this, that the plaza will be something that is state-of-the-art. Big Y uses world-class supermarket as their tagline. We think this will be a world-class store in Norwood, off of Walpole Street, and I think that's what the area deserves. Of course, I'm a little bit biased, but my sister who shops there all the time has pretty much told me if I screwed this up, she's never talking to me again. So I think the customers as well will enjoy the end result of this. So to get to that point, the site plan rules and regulations have nine criteria, some of which have multiple, multiple subparts, and I only propose to go over the high level of each. And of course, at any point, if you have further questions, we can delve as deep into them as you care for. But basically, the first one talks about lighting. It talks about reducing light pollution, light trespass, preserving natural scenic and aesthetic qualities of the town, conserving energy and preserving the night sky as a natural resource. And we would submit that the photometric plan and the lighting plans are designed to be dark sky compliant, prevent spillage onto neighboring properties, and comply with all of the requirements. As far as noise goes, the major noise will be the reconstruction. That we can't get around, the town of Norwood is very specific, noise bylaws, we will adhere to those. Once the construction is completed, we anticipate that the site will be as quiet, or if not quieter, than what is currently there today. As far as landscaping and screening, we will provide approximately, on the current plan in front of you, an increase of 3,000 square feet of previous area that will be landscaped with native plants and additional open space within the development that is currently just parking lot. We have designed the projects that there's no direct impact to the existing wetland. And I will also mention, for those of you who didn't catch it earlier, the border to the northeast, I guess, is Hawes Brook. We are also filing a notice of intent with the Norwood Conservation Commission. And though I know he has since retired, in the past four months, he worked extensively without gets as the conservation agent to ensure that our development was going to meet the Rivers Act and local bylaw provisions for Norwood as well. We've talked about adding additional, adding trees to the landscaping. Even though we don't trigger the landscaping requirements of the zoning by law, we will adhere to those as best we can. And again, we've committed to working with the town planner and his staff to develop a plan that we're all happy with. As far as stormwater management goes, currently, there is none. She flows off the parking lot into the river. At the end of this, it will not do that. We are including stormwater management structures, deep sump, catch basins, water quality treatments, and we will design the same in accordance with the MASTEP Stormwater Handbook. As far as the site development standard goes, the, as I mentioned before, the redevelopment largely maintains the existing location of buildings. You can see on this slide, there are the old, I guess, building outlines in the back in red. So in some places, we do square them off, but we remove pieces from other places. Effectively, the building is roughly where it was or is currently. Again, it will be squarer and I would also note that we'll be removing several tenant spaces to accommodate the larger Big Y store. So you're going to have a more consolidated use of the building than is currently there, currently has been to this point. As far as pedestrian and vehicular access, I'm going to leave that largely for Nate to talk through. But again, the entrance has been designed to the extent it can be at this point. I'd also note that as we're on Walpole Street at this particular location, MASTDOT has the jurisdiction as to what we can and can't do with our curb cut. And we have modified it to the extent we can within the current parameters of our permit with them. And again, we can talk about that in further detail if you so wish. As far as aesthetics go, I'm not going to ask Nate to flash the next, the renderings, but when we get to that point, I think you will be pleasantly not surprised or we wouldn't be doing this, but favorably disposed to the new facade. It looks considerably better and I'd. It looks considerably better, and I believe the aesthetics all around the building are such that it will be an improvement to the neighborhood, no matter which way you look at the building. As far as utilities go, we have talked with the Norwood Power and Light, we've talked with the fire, as well as the water departments, all during the department head review. There was no concern about servicing the building per se, and we have committed to work with the fire department to reevaluate the fire department hookups to the new store. It's not a matter of how many, it's just where they would be optimally placed. And to wherever feasible, we're committed to putting our utilities underground. As far as the fiscal impact, the rules and regulations require that this be a positive benefit to the town of Norwood. We would submit that though it will be ultimately a determination of your assessment department, there will be millions of dollars spent in upgrading this shopping center. And you will have fewer vacant storefronts because quite frankly, they'll be eliminated and put and replaced with a larger Big Y, which will actually be an attraction to the area as opposed to, in many cases now, a shopping center of last resort, if you will. So we believe that will be a positive impact on the tax revenue to the town. We anticipate that there will be more jobs created by Big Y, and we do not believe there will be any additional requirements for municipal services. Accordingly, we would submit respectfully that this project will be a net positive benefit to the town. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to turn it over to Nate from Bowler Engineering. He can go into further specificity as to the actual plan.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Phil. Again, for the record, my name's Nathan Mahonan with Bowler Engineering. Phil did a great job summarizing everything there, so I'll cut mine a little bit shorter and just kind of stay towards the engineering side of things. But as Phil noted, it's the existing retail center off of Walpole Street, adjacent to Hawes Brook, again, to the northeast here with its associated resource areas and buffers. The project is associated, as you mentioned, is for raising and redevelopment of the existing building in this area for the construction of a new 55,000 plus or minus square foot Big Y. As Phil had noted, the access off of Walpole Street is, in its current configuration, as it remains in the DOT right away, but as you get into the site, we've taken out this kind of funky T intersection that exists there today with some parallel spaces that were there, and we've created a nice kind of continuous sweeping entry into the plaza, which will provide a much needed improvement to traffic circulation into the site. As you get into the site, the circulation pattern generally remains the same. We have made some updates to end islands and landscaped areas around the perimeters towards the new Big Y and the existing storefronts to remain in order to accommodate the new footprint and the new layout for the development. Loading access will continue to be provided from Davis Avenue as it exists today, and we'll access a new loading dock area for the new Big Y building at the rear of the store here. Utilities, again, there's not an impact there. The center will continue to reanalyze existing municipal water sewer connections for the new Big Y as well as the existing tenants in the center. Relative to stormwater, as Phil has noted, essentially, the entire site is captured and conveyed or sheet flows off the front parking lot into Hawes Brook with very little to know water quality treatment. The project will comply with D E P Stormwater Management Standards relative to redevelopment projects, including construction of new onsite deep sump catch basins, water quality units to provide water quality treatment for stormwater runoff into Hawes Brook. The 3,000 square foot decrease in impervious area, as previously mentioned, will also provide a benefit to water quality for the site and its overall impact to the adjacent resource areas. The landscaping improvements that were mentioned are detailed on the landscaping plan. As Phil noted as well, we're working with the town to make some improvements to that plan, including additional trees onsite, but there are proposed improvements to the landscaping at the front entry, not only for the modified entrance in this location here, but additional landscaping to be added within the islands and the perimeter of the drive aisles as you enter and exit the site. Parking lot lighting is mentioned will be upgraded to LED style light fixtures and will be dark sky compliant. And two other things I don't believe were covered, the existing pylon sign at the front of the site will be upgraded and replaced with a new sign. We do have some fixtures of that that we can get to in a moment to show you what that will look like. And just one overall kind of maintenance and upgrade item for the center as a whole, the areas outside of the work that's required for the proposed improvements, the rest of the parking lot itself will be repaved, will be milled and overlaid, so the pavement on the entire center for the parking lot will be replaced and upgraded as part of the project. So it's really kind of the engineering items from a global perspective. We can certainly get into more detail as we move along, but this time, I'd like to pass over to Charles Burcker from the applicant, who will go through some of the architectural items and some of the other items, including the pylon signs at the front of the site.
Thank you, Charles.
I believe Charles is muted.
Charles, are you available to comment?
I can see him talking, he's just not coming through.
Is he an attorney?
Okay, I'm unmuted now. I was muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Because I was muted.
Go ahead with your presentation.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
I believe he's muted again.
Casey, can you jump in and help him out, please?
Yes, yep. So we're, as Phil and Nathan have indicated, we're the landlord for the shopping center, and we've owned the plaza for about 10-plus years. And, you know, I think we can all agree, it's time for an upgrade. We're happy to be able to team up with the Big Y folks and make that happen, and at the same time, you know, recognize our existing tenants as well, the smaller tenants have been with us for a while, such as Bay State Liquors and Haircuts, Haircuts Plus, be able to upgrade their facades, and, you know, we feel at the end of the project, it would be good, it would be good for all the tenants all around. Moving into the overall project itself, you know, we're going to demo the existing nail salon that moved down the road, they relocated, demo the Salvation Army space, the two-level building behind the Salvation Army, as well as the Big Y, and then the existing Bay State Liquors is going to bump over to where the vacant dry cleaners and vacant laundry mat is right now. So at the end of the projects, you'll have the Planet Fitness, the Dollar Tree, the Big Y, the Bay State, and the Haircuts Shop. And, you know, to Nathan's point, we will be upgrading the parking lot, paving that's there. There were some, there were some concerns there, and you've definitely heard those concerns, and going to obviously move forward in doing that. So, you know, we think overall, the project could be good for the town and good for the neighborhood, and, yeah, we think it'll be great overall.
That'll wrap up your presentation?
Yes.
Mr. Alke Otis, have you got something to input on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The planning department, Pat and I have reviewed the site plans. We held a site plan review meeting with the departments, and we had good attendance with most of the departments attending and providing some feedback on the plans, both verbally and in writing from the Health Department, the Engineering Department, and the Light The applicant has responded to most of those comments. I'll start by saying that we're very pleased to see the owners willing to invest a large amount of money to bring this shopping center up to date. I find that the architectural design, the facade improvements are attractive, and I think it will be a great benefit to the residents in that area to have not only a new supermarket, but a facelift on the other buildings attached to it, the other businesses in the shopping center. I provided the board with site plan review comments and a memo last week, and I'm not going to go over all of my comments, and I heard some feedback tonight that the applicant is willing to continue to work with us on some parking lot improvements. You may notice that the parking lot has new islands proposed in front of the stores, and there are end cap islands on the other end that run along Hawes Brook. However, the section portion of the parking lot is predominantly going to be left the same without any additional islands to try to control traffic movement and to provide landscaping. During our initial review, we noticed that there were no new trees proposed, and based on what I've heard this evening, the applicant's willing to work with us on continuing to make improvements to the parking lot and the landscaping. I'll note that the stormwater improvements that the applicant is proposing to do will vastly improve the quality of the water that's discharged into Hawes Brook. This is going to be a big invisible benefit to, from this project, as currently, there's no pretreatment of the stormwater, there's nothing to capture the sand and sediment, there's no holding tanks to let the hydrocarbons evaporate, and they will be providing all of this under the parking lot where it can't be seen, but it's really going to be a big benefit to improve the water quality in Hawes Brook, and we thank the applicant for working with us on that. We have received some comments just this afternoon from retired conservation agent Al Getz. There's nothing earth-shattering in those comments. I will forward those to the applicant's team tomorrow morning, and hopefully, they'll be able to respond to them. As they indicated, they will be filing with the Conservation Commission, and the commission will use a peer review consultant to work with them and advise them in the process of issuing orders and conditions for the site. Going over my notes. Those are pretty much the main comments that we had on the project. As I said, there's more details in the site plan review memo that we provided to the board. I will say that at the end of last week, we started to receive some calls to the planning office regarding kind of the back house operations of the supermarket, and I believe we have some neighborhood residents here at the meeting that are going to want to speak to those issues. But from what I understand, the site plan shows the load, access to the loading area behind the supermarket off of Davis Ave, and there's a pathway, a driveway that connects through with residential homes on either side. From what we understand, there has been some noise issues over the years, and I think that when the board opens this up to public comments, you'll hear from some of the neighbors about some of their concerns. I'm hoping that we'll be able to work through those issues between the neighbors and the applicants to address all of their concerns. We're well interested to continue to work with the applicant to refine this project, and as I said, we're pleased that they're moving forward with these improvements, particularly in these economic times of great risk for somebody to take a risk and do a huge reinvestment in a property like this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paul.
I think Pat has some comments.
Okay, Pat, please.
No, I just wanted to, it looks like Charles Burkert was able to get his microphone to work now, and if he has some comments.
Yes, can you hear me, Patrick?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that technical issue I had. I'm Charles Burkert, I'm the head of tenant construction for Cedar Realty. And good evening to all the members of the board here tonight, and everyone else representing the town of Norwood, and to some of our neighbors who've joined the call as well. Thank you for placing this on your agenda for tonight. We appreciate the expediency and the attention you've given the application thus far. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you this plan to renovate the shopping center. This is something we've wanted to do for some time, but we needed the full participation of a strong anchor tenant, which we now have with Big Y and their firm commitment to, as Phil described, make this a world-class store, which I think is what they're proposing. There are a few slides here I did want to share with you, the first of which, which is up on the screen right now, is a perspective view showing the two tenant spaces to the right of Big Y, which will remain. As Phil noted earlier, there is a portion of that building that must be removed in order to allow the Big Y to expand in that direction. So this remaining portion of the building will be fully renovated, as you see. I should note that the facade to the left of Big Y, which today, there are a couple of small tenants, that portion of the center will no longer exist. It'll just be the Planet Fitness and the Dollar Tree, and those facades were renovated in 2013 and 2014. So they're scheduled to remain as is. Nate, could you flip to the next slide, please? This is the proposed elevation of the Big Y. This is a brand-new prototype they've been working on for some time. We're very excited about it. We think that this is aesthetically a huge improvement for the plaza and will be a real add to the town and to all the patrons who will be shopping here in the future, and so dramatically enhance the overall appeal of the entire shopping center. And so dramatically enhance the overall appeal of the entire shopping center. The last slide, uh, I want to share with you is the pylon sign, as Nathan mentioned. You can see in this slide to the right corner, there is a photo of the existing, uh, pylon circa nineteen sixties. Uh, that, that will be replaced in its entirety. The new sign you see here on the left is what's being proposed. The height of the sign is roughly five feet less than the existing sign today. But the width and the actual sign area in terms of square footage is, is virtually identical to what exists today. You can see we, we played off the design of the Big Y, um, tried to pick up some of those design elements here, incorporated those into the design of the sign. One last thing I, I did want to address and mention that, um, there are some of our neighbors on the call. We have, um, met with a number of them. We know that there are a number of concerns which really boil down into a few categories. Screening, whether it be, um, through, you know, somatic shrubbery and/or fencing, uh, some tree trimming that needs to be done. Drainage, uh, from time to time, we've had some flooding issues, uh, in some areas of that rear parking lot. And also noise and noise relative to deliveries and, um, truck traffic, be it early in the morning or past a certain time in the evening. We do plan to address all of those concerns, and, um, we will, um, be making some additions to the plan to depict those before we come back to the board on our next go-round as part of all the, any other adjustments that will be made to the plan. And with that, I'll turn it back to our moderator. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the board have any comments? Mr. Shan?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Um, one had to do with the lighting. I know that, um, I thought I saw something where the poles would be twenty-five feet high, and I was wondering if that met our criteria. Or, I think in the past, we've had them actually lower because they didn't need to be that high. And I just want to know if, uh, maybe Paul has any recollection on that? And if the twenty-five feet is necessary or if we could go lower?
So actually, if, if I may, this is Nathan with Bowler. The revised lighting plan that was submitted to the board, uh, with some of the information that, uh, Paul noted on the items that we were addressing, the plan shows a twenty-foot pole height, which is in compliance with the bylaw.
Okay. I, uh, was looking at probably the brochure, I think, that came, came with this. Uh, the other thing is, the, the other question is about the traffic flow. I noticed when you said coming off the main street, uh, you had the traffic go to the left. At, it currently goes to the right and it would pull in front of the store. Could you just explain how the whole thing kind of works as far as someone comes in, they make a trip to the grocery store and they come in, and which way they're going to come in, and which way they're going to leave?
Certainly. Um, so the, the existing entrance here currently today, you, you come in and there's this odd kind of almost T shape with some parallel spaces right in front of it, and there's just kind of some open asphalt in here that kind of gives you the perception of you're, you're in, and which way do you go? So what we've done is we've kind of taken out that parallel space in the open area there, put a landscaped island in, and the intent is that you can come in and you can take a right to come over towards a couple of the smaller tenants that are over here, if you wish, or continue kind of down in front of the Big Y, um, with the, the traffic circulation pattern in front of the building. But the intent, I believe, is most of the traffics is going to come in, and you have the, the main route comes to the left and down the main access aisle by Hawes Brook, where once you get to here, you can make a determination if you want to go up into Big Y, or you want to continue down and go over to, you know, Planet Fitness and, and Dollar Tree. So that's, that's kind of the main access in. Uh, that would also be the intended main access out, is that with the circulation pattern on site, that folks would be back to this exterior access aisle and then back out to the exit, which is in this location here.
So most traffic would be coming in and going to the left, some of it can come in and go through the right. Is there access only or mostly, uh, coming out, uh, over by the, uh, Hawes Brook side? And then mo- most of it would be leaving that way?
Yeah, for, for consumers, this is really your, your, your in and out. There's these, the rear access stuff at Davis, but that only gets you to the back of the building, which would be for loading purposes or for maintenance or, you know, fire or things of that nature. So your, your consumers would be in and out off of Walpole Street at this location here.
Okay, the, the other thing I was interested is in the delivery, but I think we'll touch upon that a little later. So I can leave that up until we get into that. That might, in my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Patcikowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, uh, hello Attorney Mackey, it's been a while. Always glad to see, uh, either a father or a son in front of the board. Joe touched on a couple of my questions. I'm just going to recap a couple of the things that, uh, so they're, they're just, uh, the way this meeting is here. So as far as Planet Fitness and the Dollar Tree, there is no, um, being worked on to the sides of those. Those were already done, so they're not being touched in this project, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, you're planning on repaving the entire parking lot, right?
Correct.
Beautiful. Uh, I will say it is very confusing driving in there, uh, the parking, as Joe mentioned. And, uh, the only thing that I find that most people do, you say that you can take a right if you want to go to like the, the liquor store and stuff. I always find that if people are going to Big Y, they're going to take the right, and they're going to snake in that way in front of Big Y. So most of your Big Y customers are going to take a right coming in. And if you're going to Dollar Tree, you, you take the left by the bank and then head down that way. And then it seems that everybody leaves that way by, uh, Hawes Brook. Uh, so it's, it's a, we, it's always been a weird, uh, way in, uh, into that thing. But I will touch, I did have a couple of comments, uh, on the delivery. And, uh, first of all, are there going to be changes to hours as far as, uh, when you accept deliveries or pick up dumpsters, or is that going to stay pretty much the way it is today?
This is Charles Burkert. I think, um, we are, we are contemplating and we're receptive to any comments from the board, uh, or staff members regarding that. We certainly are aware that noise has been an issue, uh, with some of the neighbors and that referring specifically to noise that would occur, let's say, before seven or eight o'clock in the morning and then after seven or eight o'clock at night. That needs to be addressed. Um, we don't, we don't think this has been a daily occurrence, but the fact it's happening and, and shouldn't be happening and, and causing that disturbance. So, uh, we're prepared to discuss that, and, um, certainly Big Y, I know, wants to be a good neighbor. So we just, we need the, we need the input.
There is, um, I did not realize that most of your deliveries come in off of Davis Avenue. And the, I mean, then you run your eighteen-wheelers down that, that, or is that just for smaller vehicle? Like bread trucks and milk trucks, those kind of things?
That, that's been the delivery route since the center was the first developed.
Okay. And you just thought you don't have the room to swing them around the building any other way, pretty much, right?
There's no other way.
No other way, yeah, okay. Change lighting, twenty-foot poles, I'm glad that's, uh, we've, we've switched that. We're going to talk about delivery time schedules with the neighbors. I'm glad you're willing to work with them, uh, and the Dollar Tree store. So with that, at that point, uh, thank you for, uh, investing money in this. It's, it's well-needed and I'm glad you're doing it. And at that point, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Mr. Hatchey?
Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to carry off of a question that, uh, Mr. Patcikowski just asked. Pole lots being resurfaced, uh, presumably white lines, uh, what, is the number of spots changing at all?
Uh, yes, so the parking space, uh, count, let me get those exact numbers for you here, one second. Will be changing from, there's roughly, there's three hundred and eighty spaces out there today. Uh, will be reduced down to three hundred and sixty-two, uh, which is still in compliance with zoning, which requires around three hundred and twenty-nine.
Okay, great. Um, I, I have a question about a part of the perimeter, the landscaping. I guess you could call it the north, well, northwestern, I guess, butting the, the, the garage, the auto mechanics facility there. What, what is the landscaping or fencing or perimeter plan encompassed for that? Just that piece of it? Um, I'm not, uh, maybe I'm misreading it, but I, I'm wondering if somebody can just describe it to me?
Just, just for clarification, you're talking about this portion here, or I'm musing over now?
I'm not, I don't have your graphic up, but it's, uh, it's the part that, it, it's right off the front edge, butting the, uh, the auto garage that's, uh, on the far right side if you're driving, uh, on one A towards Walpole.
Nate, I can jump in on this one. Sure. Yes, you're, he's, he's actually talking about the parking lot that's associated with what used to be the Santander Bank. Unfortunately, we don't own that.
That's off your site?
It is. Um, it's, it's all part of the same parking lot, and there's a co-seasment between the two landowners, but, um, I'm going to call it a Santander parcel. I'm sure it's not owned by Santander Bank. It's basically an L-shaped piece. Actually, it's all the border between what is effectively our parking lot and the, uh, the auto store there.
I'm, I'm seeing it here in the plan. It's, it's, it's clear now, but I guess that explains it.
Yes, otherwise there would be more there.
Couple of quick other questions. As far as the lights are concerned, I'm just looking at the plans. These new light poles, uh, they, they essentially sit straight on pavement. There's no beds or other intermediate surface that, that, you know, around them. They, they just bolt pretty much right out of the, the asphalt parking lot?
Yes, that's what's currently proposed. You're reading it correctly.
Sure. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Quick question on your parking spot count. You're going down to three sixty-two. What are the dimensions on the parking spaces?
I just want to make sure I, I heard that correctly. You're just asking the dimensions on the parking spaces?
That is correct, yes.
So the existing spaces out there are to remain, the most of them. Uh, the ones that are getting restripped or reconfigured, uh, mostly out in front of Big Y or down towards the Dollar Tree area are in compliance with zoning and are nine by eighteen and a half.
Mr. Bamber?
Hello, everyone. I'm very excited that, uh, this is being, uh, redeveloped. It's a little rough, um, around the edges, but this should be a good thing, uh, for the town. I have a little bit of an side, uh, sidebar here. Not sure if we can do this, but I was wondering if we could possibly pull the lot back near Hawes Brook a little bit. We kind of joked about a park. We can't turn this into a park, but the parking is, uh, it's a, it's a giant parking lot that is never halfway full. But, you know, I was wondering if we could utilize some of that space along Hawes Brook after the bank, basically where the drive comes in and it takes the sharp turn, that odd turn. It comes along the river. If we could reduce that dog leg by, I don't know, whatever, the, the width of the drive against the river and basically pull that in and then create some green space along the river there to grab a sandwich and maybe eat some food or other, you know, have some activities. I don't know. It would, I think it would really spruce up not just, you know, the outside, which is, I'm sure you guys are going to do a great job. It's going to be beautiful. You have a great setup. I like Big Y. But if we had a, you know, some sort of green space right along the brook, it would almost mirror the other side of the brook where we already have an existing park. I don't know if anyone, uh, could speak to that, or if any other board members, uh, you know, have any thoughts on that. Thanks, Al.
This is Charles Burkert. I, you know, that idea hasn't been presented to us as of yet. We, we can certainly discuss that internally. What I would tell you, one thing is I would agree that while the parking lot is often, you know, not full today, that's a reflection of the store that is there today. And our experience has been, and I think Big Y would, would, um, second this, that with a state-of-the-art store of this, uh, type and size, it, it's quite possible that lot will be very full much of the time. In, in fact, we expect that. That's not to say that we're, you know, adverse to doing what you're suggesting. I think this has to be approached very thoughtfully.
Thank you. Paul and Patrick, do you have something you want to add on the end here before I open it up to the public?
I think it's time to accept some public comment.
Okay. If you understand how this goes, you need to state your name and your address, and then you can put in your comments to us to consideration. Anybody first? Sir, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Edward Valenzola. I'm an attorney. I'm principal of Valenzola Law Group with offices in Mansfield and on Atlantic Avenue in Boston. And I represent Bay State Wine and Spirits. They've asked me to participate in these hearings. I understand, and this is the kickoff hearing tonight. Phil Mackey, it's good to see you again. We, uh, we did something, a few things a, a number of years back, and I'm surprised we're both still working, quite frankly, but, um, you know, it is good to see you. My clients have been speaking with the folks at Cedar Realty. I understand those discussions have been going well and will continue. And all my clients look forward to discussing the project, the timing. My comments are going to be more directed toward not the end rooms. Once they're all done, it sounds like it's going to be one tremendous, uh, development or redevelopment, but how we get there. Because the paperwork I looked at, I saw there were several phases. Phase two demolition, site improvements, utilities, things like that, begins on or about February two thousand twenty-one and continues through August. That's about seven months. And then the construction phase is anticipated to begin in September two thousand twenty-one and continue through June two thousand twenty-two. So that's about a year and a half. And as, uh, some of the folks mentioned earlier during, uh, the presentation, there are tenants in that center, and my client is one of them that's going to be relocated, uh, further away from the existing building so that Big Y can expand. And so my initial comments, and I know this is just the first hearing, and, uh, you know, we'll continue to work with the town with, uh, and everyone else, but, uh, it's more construction impact on the tenants, particularly my client in the center. in the center during this 18-month phase. And I know there's other tenants, whether all of these tenants, the anticipation is going to be that they're all going to close for a period of time and for how long and what's practical. And when they open again, what's practical during a construction phase? I think we need to see more information on that. Noise, dust, visibility, main road, access, safety, parking, emergency vehicles, you know, for the tenants that are going to be there, open and operating, fire, police. But, you know, most importantly, this is a major renovation. They're not just giving this a facelift, but they're going to knock the building down. There's going to be a demolition. And so how much of the park, I didn't see in any of the documents, how much of the parking area is affected? And for what period of time? And what's the plan for those people that do want to, do dare to come into the shopping center and try to go to the liquor store or to one of the other tenants there? How are they protected? How is the parking area protected, pedestrian walkways, things like that? So I think, and I understand, again, this is just the first meeting, and all of this probably has to be developed if there's going to be a period of time where the tenants are going to continue, even if they close for, you know, a period of time. So I didn't see that. In the paperwork, it talked about the applicant filing a more comprehensive memorandum. And I didn't see that either. So I'm not sure that's done yet or that's something that'll be forthcoming. Let's see. So those are my initial comments. Again, my clients have already been in discussions with Cedar Realty. They've been cordial and, you know, we're confident they'll be able to work through what our concerns are. But in the meantime, you know, parallel with those discussions, I want to just bring to your attention some of our immediate concerns. And as this moves forward, you know, we would participate and hopefully work through our concerns. But I think that these are issues that need to be addressed for my client, for the tenants there, because I don't see that at all. How we're going to go through that 18-month period. That's quite a long, you know, you look at demolition for six, seven months and then construction for another period of time. You know, what happens to those tenants and what happens to people that want to shop, you know, at those locations? So that's it for now. Thank you.
Someone from Cedar like to respond at this time?
Yes, this is Charles Burke. What I would say is, we have been working on a phasing plan almost from the get-go here. It's a complicated project in that it would be far easier if we were just knocking it down and starting over, but we fully realize the need to maintain a safe site and provide access to our tenants, which are open and operating. Now, the only tenant to be relocated here is Bay State Wine and Spirits. And the tenants that are not being affected by, you know, having their space either altered or spaces that are being removed are the Haircuttery, Planet Fitness, and Dollar Tree. And at all times, there will be access to those locations. There will be parking available to those locations. We will, you know, it's going to be a rather involved phasing plan. We're working through a lot of those details now, so we can assure that the work can progress as quickly and efficiently as possible, but safely, and taking into consideration all the concerns that were just articulated with noise and dust and so forth. So anything that the town would like to see vis a vis a phasing plan or details of the scheduling as it develops, we're happy to share that.
Thank you. Paul Helkeotos, do you have any comments at this time?
Yes, in response to those concerns, and I think they're all legitimate concerns that do need to be responded to. Oftentimes, as conditions of approval will place conditions on the permit, things like requiring the applicant to submit a construction truck traffic routing plan that would need to be reviewed and approved by the police safety officer and the DPW director so that we know that all of the trucks that are going to be coming to the site in the first phase during demolition and in the later phases during construction are going to be following routes that stay away from small local streets and away from residential neighborhoods. That's an example of one thing that we can work out with the applicant and come to agreement on how the access to site. With respect to other things, we do as a standard condition of approval, mention that the town has a noise bylaw and that they will need to adhere to that. And we will consider other conditions and changes to the plan to address the possible impacts during construction.
Thank you. Have you got anything you'd like to add here at this time?
If I may?
Yes.
Yeah, Ed Valenzola again. I think that one of the threshold questions that needs to be addressed, and not necessarily tonight, is the practicality of actually knocking down a building like this, a major anchor grocery tenant, and trying to operate smaller tenants around it, even those that are not going to be relocated. And so, you know, I think it's, it can be done, but it's going to take quite a while, as indicated in the phases. And so I think the threshold question is, how is it going to be done? So that realistically, you don't have people trying to come into that center, snaking through narrow driveways to get to the tenant they want to go to, whether it's my client or others, while there's fencing, scaffolding, and construction vehicles coming and going. So I haven't seen, and I'm sure Cedar will be able to address that, hopefully to everyone's satisfaction, but it seems to me that this is a major undertaking, you know, to take down a major tenant, their building, and then try to continue to operate some of the smaller tenants while you're doing that construction. I think that has to be looked at very closely.
And I think they addressed that, to be honest with your counselor, in that they were going to present a plan that will be reviewed by all of our safety, fire, police, and that type of stuff before that plan is approved.
I'm sorry.
And address the tenants.
Yeah, I mean, the fire and the police and, you know, their feedback obviously is important, but I think the planning board, as far as site plan review respectfully, you know, we don't need to look at how realistic it is to take down a building like this and have everything going on that's going to be going on for 18 months. And what that means, we can make it safe and make it so that vehicles can get in and out, but does that really work, you know, for the tenants? And I'm sure if there's a butters on the, that are going to be participating, they may have similar concerns for that 18-month period, so.
Thank you. Okay, open it up to the community. Want to give a name and an address? Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Carver, and I am on 34 Davis Avenue. I have some concerns. I have spoken to some of the individuals at Cedar Realty. Matter of fact, today I had a long conversation with Charles from Cedar Realty. It went very well. However, there were a couple of things. One, a little history. My house was actually moved from 450 Walpole Street, which is a site where their sign sits on right now, in 1960. It was moved under a special permit. And in 1976, it was required to adjust it for the right-of-way roadway next to it so that they had enough land to actually put a residential house on it. So the house could be actually sold to my parents. So part of the deal was, there was, there was, I paid the taxes on that driveway, which is no benefit to me. The benefit to me was, I had a small parcel of land behind the house that we could utilize that was owned by, at the time, Alibiso's Trust, Alibiso's Realty Trust. Mr. Alibiso's was a gentleman, very nice guy, great family. I have not had any problems with Cedar Realty Trust other than trying to get the alley cleaned up, trees cut, nuisance trees cut. And I understand they're trying to work on that plan, but a lot of things have changed since 1963, as Mr. Mackey had mentioned. And part of that is the size of vehicles. I look at these plans now. I was told that the, that the the ramp by which the trucks deliver product was not going to change. It's actually 180 degrees from where it is today. So those trucks are going to be directly in my backyard and Mr. Hebner's backyard. That, if you look at the end of payment on the plan here that exists, where the, right there, where the, yeah, exactly, right there. That's the piece of property right now as it sits. So those trucks are going to be, basically Cedar Realty owns the property. However, you know, my whole thing was, we were taking care of the property behind the house, mowing it, taking care of all of the cleanup, annual cleanup. And Cedar Realty was supposed to take care of the trees along the right-of-way entranceway. And if any of the members of the board have actually been down that driveway behind the plaza, there has been little to no maintenance in the last several years. I did have a conversation with the, with the manager of the facility. His name is Mike Amenabar, I believe it is. I may be pronouncing his name incorrectly, and I do apologize for that. And part of the thing is, we just want to get these trees cut down. We want a buffer, landscape buffer with a fence. And on page one, on page 50 of 125 of one of the plans, I'm not sure exactly which plan it was, it shows parking in that area, which formerly was my backyard. Doesn't say, it was about, I don't know, 10, 15 spots there. I want to make sure that is 100% off the table. It's bad enough that we have to deal with these trucks all hours of the night. The vacuum trucks that come down, the truck, just the, come around in the middle of the night, back and forth behind the plaza. There are several operational errors, and they all can be corrected. We just need to make sure that that there's some sort of a mechanism put in place by which we can report. And I'm not going to call the Norwood Police Department and tell them there's a truck in the back alley at 10:05 PM. It's not going to happen. The police are busy enough. They don't need nuisance reports like that. But we just need to work together, because 18 months is a long time to endure that type of construction. Literally, I would say 50 to 75 feet from my bedroom window. So as long as the conversations remain open, I fully support it. I think it's a great project. I think that they're doing great things. It's definitely going to help the town of Norwood. However, we've waited a long time to get the ability to make sure that the vehicles, once this project is over, that the same thing doesn't happen again. And we have no teeth by which to report it. We have no recourse, and we're just shoveling it against the tide. There's, there are some operational errors, issues that are, that exist behind the plaza today. And if any of the members took a walk behind that, they would actually be amazed at the condition of behind the plaza and the trees. The trees need to be removed and fences put in place before the permit is issued, basically. And we can do it on a gentleman's agreement, as long as, as long as there's some sort of teeth into getting people to do what they say they'll do. And that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak at this time? Anyone? No responses.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Pachekowski has something to say.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Pachekowski.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick comments. One, Paul, just so you can verify it, I'm sure this, going back to the, to the talk about the demolition of the project, the demolition. I believe, and I could have just threw this computer thing, I might, may have missed it, but I believe you have to submit a demolition plan to the billing inspector, which shows everything that, you know, that the, where it'll be fenced off, where, you know, some fence will be put up, where hay bales will be put, access egress, you know, all that type of thing. And I think, I believe if the billing inspector signs off on that, I may be wrong, but so hopefully the gentleman with the concerns on the liquor store, the demolition plan will show all of that. And as far as the Cedar Realty, again, it's a great project, but just, you know, you don't have a lot of neighbors there. You really don't. And, you know, you got to look out for them. They're real close to your operations, so I'm hoping that you will work with them. In all honesty, a project this size, what, you know, a couple 100 feet of fencing or some tree work is short money to, you know, to your, you know, you're driving kind of like right through their area all the time. So I just hope that you work with the neighbors and in the big scheme of things, it won't be, it'd be short money to take care of them, so please work with them on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pachekowski. Anyone else from the board like to speak at this time? The chairman has a couple of comments. One of the things has to do with the condition of the rear of the store. And it's terrible at the least, okay? And I think that's going to be addressed as part of this whole project. The other part of the project that I have here, if I read this correctly, that's a two-bay loading dock and the like for a couple of 53-foot trailers with a tractor. Am I correct?
That is correct. It's too bad.
One of the things I'd like you to take a look at and think about is building off the building, almost like a shaded area, that the trailers could pull up, back in, and shut down. Now we're there. They're not idling outside. They're not in the weather, and they're not in the faces of the neighborhood. Similar thing we just had, presented to us, was by Amazon up on Everett Street. They pull them completely in the building, but I'm not looking for that. I'm looking for something to give some shade of that, if you will, to the neighbors. Okay? That's all I have for that. We have nobody else that would like to speak? I would like most, yeah, Mr. Helkeotos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we had a discussion about the construction impacts, I think it would make sense to ask the applicant to just go forward and prepare a traffic circulation plan for how the traffic will flow through the lot to the adjacent businesses during construction. So I'd recommend that the board, you know, ask ball or engineering to prepare that plan. And we will be later asking at some point for a construction traffic, construction traffic routing plan off-site. And we'd ask the applicant to continue to look into that. We look forward to continuing our conversation with the applicant on refining this plan. And I would strongly recommend that And I would strongly recommend that, uh, if there are simple issues that can be addressed sooner than later, um, the issues raised by Mr. Corcoran related to tree trimming and tree cutting, go ahead and have those trees cut down so we don't have to have that conversation at the next hearing. I've asked the applicant to try to address as many of the issues as they can from the neighborhood, um, residents so that, um, those issues are taken off the plate and we can focus on, um, uh, other issues that might arise as we continue the review. Based on what I've heard, it sounds like the board should continue this hearing. Our, our next meeting, we don't have a meeting scheduled for, uh, Ju- July twenty-seventh, but on the agenda or the next agenda item is to, uh, discuss, uh, setting that meeting up. And so I'd recommend that the board vote to continue the hearing until, uh, July twenty-seventh at like seven, ten PM. And, uh, hopefully we will have a number of the concerns that were raised tonight ironed out by then.
Thank you, Mr. Helgiotis. Would someone or another board member like to make a motion regarding to help you outline?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Pachakowski.
That, um, before you make that motion, uh, Paul, did you say the next meeting is the twenty-seventh?
Yes, that's what he said.
Okay, there's a, uh, not, I'm on vacation that week. There is a, uh, if the state of Maine will let me in, I may be away that night. Uh, in which case, uh, you know, we wouldn't, uh, review all the, the things, uh, when I get back. I may be around the twenty-seventh, but, uh, I, I'm hoping not to be.
Mr. Helgiotis, what about the following Monday? Do we have anything planned?
Um, so the, the following Monday would be, uh, August third. Um, it, it, Pat, do we have a meeting scheduled for then already?
So our, uh, our August meeting is, I think, August tenth. And I guess we'll discuss this more next. Um, but other than the twenty-seventh, the next scheduled meeting was supposed to be August tenth. So, uh, it's up to the board what they, what they deem as appropriate date. We can work around that.
Mr. Chairman?
Sheen.
Um, August tenth, I will be away.
Another vacation.
Yeah.
Good for you. Uh, sure, the tenth doesn't work?
The, the third would work for me.
Okay. Let's tentatively, let's tentatively move it to the third. And, uh, if we have to change it, we'll put a notice out to change it. Okay, anybody want to make a motion for that, please?
So moved?
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you.
The third works for me.
Okay. All right. First, second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? On the roll, Mr. Pachakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Mr. Hatchey?
Yes.
And Mr. Bamba?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes. So we have a tentative meeting for the third. August. Okay. What else do we have here on this? Anything? Hey. Pat, what do you got in the next agenda item?
I believe, uh, after this, we're moving on to planning board business. Um, the timeline, uh, exact, of, of, of meeting schedules is actually the, uh, the next thing up. So I'm just going to throw that on right now. So, uh, this is a kind of a draft agenda. It sounds like we're already kind of work around and reschedule. Um, August third to be our next meeting. Uh, but from that, I, I kind of scheduled out a rough idea for the rest of the year. If the board has any questions or comments, so I guess just remove the twenty-seventh and the tenth and we'll put August third.
Okay, okay by me. Anyone else have any comments on that? Okay.
Chairman, it looks fine to me.
Thank you. How about a motion to accept proposal with the changes made?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Opposed? Oh, sorry, opposed? Unanimous. Okay. On the roll call, Mr. Pachakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Hatchey?
Yes.
Mr. Bamba?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes. Five zero. Thank you. What else do we have?
All right, well, we're, um, a moment. So moving on to a, a discussion of the site plan approval decision for seven fifty Everett Street. A draft copy was included in the zip folder that I had emailed to all on Friday. So, I don't, I'll pass that over to Paul.
We have, um, drafted the decision for the Amazon, um, distribution facility and we provided copies to the board in your package. We included conditions that address the things that we talked about at, uh, at our last hearing. And, um, they focused on, thanks Pat. Um, the special conditions for the project focused on, um, making sure that, uh, delivery vehicles do not, um, idle for extended periods of time. Um, making sure that, uh, the vehicles that are based out of this location are registered those vehicles in the town of Norwood so that the town could take advantage of the, uh, potential excise tax revenue. Um, condition that related to, uh, the, uh, off-peak scheduling of the deliveries vehicles leaving the site and returning to the site. As you'll recall, um, part of, uh, the applicant's presentation indicated that, uh, their management of the facility is not to have vehicles leave at seven or eight in the morning peak traffic morning hours, um, and return at, at five or six at night during the peak PM, um, traffic. Uh, they have indicated that the vehicles, the vans and will leave their property, um, later in the morning around nine thirty and come back later in the afternoon, uh, early evening around six thirty. So condition six attempted to address that. It was a little bit tricky trying to word that. Um, and, uh, I worked with their council on this so that we could reach agreement on the language. Um, there's a condition seven about tractor trailers being prohibited from making left turns out of the site and entering the residential neighborhood in Westwood. Um, uh, condition eight related to tractor trailers unloading on the west side of the building. Um, within that, uh, covered enclosed area to reduce the noise impacts, to minimize impacts to the residential neighborhood. And, um, it also makes it clear that the nineteen ninety-eight Board of Appeals special permit that allowed for open lot storage on one of the two parcels, one of the three parcels, um, would be extinguished by this site plan approval. Um, there's a standard condition related to, uh, compliance with the noise bylaw. Um, so that, that's pretty much, um, all of the, uh, special conditions that were created for this project. There was, um, a sign, um, a, a kind of a schematic sign shown on the site plans. And, um, we didn't have all of the information. And so I, I kind of punted on that and indicated that, uh, the planning board had not really discussed the sign and that the site plan approval does not include approval of that sign and that they should just follow the usual process of applying for a signed permit from the building office. Um, so I think that, uh, the decision is in good shape. I think it helps protect the town and the surrounding neighborhood. And, um, I'd open it up for discussion. The board, um, is satisfied with it and ready to vote to approve the, the final decision.
Patrick?
Uh, I, I just want to mention, uh, we got an email from, um, Sherry Clancy of National Development indicating, uh, condition eight. And I think it's actually on the east side of the building, Paul, not the west side, if you're looking at it. And from an aerial perspective.
We can correct that. I think I was looking at it on a mirror at the time.
Thinking of aerial. No. Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any comments? Mr. Sheen?
It looks fine to me. We just have to change that east-west.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, it, it, it appears to reflect all of what was discussed at the, at the meeting, so I think it looks very good.
Looking for a motion to sign this all? Okay.
Yes.
I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, moved?
Okay, a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous? On the roll? Mr. Bamba?
Aye.
Pachakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hatchey?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Sheen?
Uh, aye.
Aye. Thank you. Five zero. Motion passed.
Thank you very much for the board's help and especially thanks to Pat and to Paul for helping us through the process and leading us on the way. And we're going to send you a compass, Paul.
Please don't build their heads up.
Only one north point on that though.
Well, just remember the sun rises in the east.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else? On the agenda?
Oh, are we going to have to sign that? Is that going to be available for signatures?
So the, uh, the decision, I believe, Paul, you just signed that. But, uh, we have the A and R from, um, seventy-four Ledgeview Drive. I think I still need two more, uh, signatures there. And then we have the A and R from tonight. Um, I need everyone's signatures on that as well.
Available tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday?
I'm here all week.
I'll be in Friday morning, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Um, other than that, I think we just have the, uh, department updates and, uh, and news.
What do you got for department updates? Good night.
Good night, Sherry. Um, I do have, uh, I wa- I wasn't able to, um, put together my written status report and I do have kind of a long list of things that I just wanted to brief the board on. So if you can hang in for about another fifteen minutes, I'd like to update you on some of the things that Patrick and I have been involved um, since our last meeting. Uh, following the, uh, the flood that occurred back on, uh, back in June, um, the, uh, we worked with the Chamber of Commerce and, uh, the Downtown, uh, Association Friends of Norwood Center. And we sponsored a webinar where we invited, uh, members of the business community to share with us how they were impacted by the flooding. Um, as of, uh, the end of June, Al Getz, former conservation agent, has retired. Uh, the general manager has appointed me the temporary conservation agent, um, to fill in for Al, uh, uh, until he hired the environmental planner. Um, the Conservation Commission has, uh, peer review consultants that they use to help them review the projects. And we've got a couple of those consultants kind of teed up and ready to go. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the first project that they'll probably be reviewing is, uh, the one that we just discussed, the Big Y Store. Um, so we'll have, uh, that consultant ready for that. I, I did ask Al to review the plans and he did provide me with some comments, um, today. And as I indicated, I will forward those, I already have forward them to Phil Mackey so that they can respond to those. Um, we, when the CARES Act was announced and we understood that there was federal funding, funding coming from, um, from that to the states, we joined in with, uh, twenty-one other communities that are part of MAPC's area and applied for, uh, micro, uh, grant, mi- micro enterprise grant program that would, um, allow for businesses of five or fewer employees to apply for CARES Act funding if they had been adversely affected by, um, the economic crisis caused by the pandemic. Uh, DHCD, uh, is going to announce, uh, those grant awards, um, probably this week. And, uh, we will keep you posted on that. Also, as part of CARES Act funding that came from the federal government to the state that is being administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development, they took half of the money and they created this, uh, micro enterprise grant program for businesses. They took the other half of the money and they set it aside for, um, housing assistance for people that are having difficulty making their rent or mortgage payments, people that, um, are having trouble paying their utilities because they've been laid off as a result of the pandemic. Um, we had contacted a, a regional agency that we're acquired to work with by DHCD and asked them whether they would work with us to provide, um, grants, housing-related grants to our residents. And, uh, we had a, a meeting with them this morning, Pat and I did, and it was a very productive meeting. And they've indicated that, um, they are now in a position where they're willing to work with us. They said that they've actually, um, have two Norwood residents that have contacted them for grant funding and, um, seven others that have inquired. So we're going to continue to, um, um, talk to them and establish, uh, a housing grant program for those people that are struggling with making, um, housing, for their housing needs. And Pat and I are going to be developing a flyer and, um, using all of the tools that we usually use to announce the availability of, uh, of grant fundings, which will include, uh, Facebook, the town's website, using Norwood Community Media, um, and, and other ways to reach out to people to let them know that there is some, um, CARES Act funding available to help them, um, manage their housing, uh, costs with, uh, with the crisis. Um, we, back, uh, several months ago, had applied for a grant from MAPC to establish a regional housing services organization. Um, another of, a number of other communities in our region are going to join us. We partnered with the town of Canton on this grant application. Uh, we, we received a technical assistance grant from MAPC and they told us that this was a big project involving a lot of communities and that we need to have a, a local match. So Pat, um, applied under the State Community Compact Program and has successfully, uh, brought in another forty thousand dollars, um, that we will use as our local match to try to establish a local housing services organization that will deal with a wide range of housing issues affecting, um, folks in our region. Um, as I mentioned, um, Al Getz has retired. The HR department has advertised the environmental planner position in the period which is, which, um, was open until Friday, just ended. And we received over, um, um, ninety-eight employment applications for that position. I, I attributed that to people flocking to work with me personally as the reason why so many people had applied. Um, unfortunately, uh, Unfortunately, uh, HR advertised this on Indeed and we got, um, all kinds of people that weren't even remotely qualified, um, applying for the position. We reviewed the first forty-eight candidates and out of those, we interviewed three. And, um, uh, two of them were strong candidates and one seemed to be, um, a bullseye for, uh, meeting all of the requirements that, um, that we had for this position. The key requirement here is that they need to have experience, um, dealing with the Wetlands Protection Act and working with local conservation commissions. And, um, so far, just one of the people we interviewed, um, currently is employed in that kind of a position and seems to have some good experience actually on both sides of the table, working for a consulting firm, submitting notice of intents to local, um, conservation commissions and, um, on our side of the table, um, working for a conservation commission now. We, uh, received another, uh, forty-eight applications and, and, um, Pat, uh, Pat triaged those and, and pointed out the ones that he thought were, um, uh, closest to what we're looking for. And there are a few more people that we will probably, um, interview on Friday. The, um, so we're cautiously optimistic that we're going to find the right person for that position. The, um, I, I unfortunately have not had time to focus on, um, recruiting an associate board member. Um, and that's been due to, um, Pat and I being pulled, pulled aside and being asked to work on some other projects for the general manager. As you may have heard, the town, um, established a small business grant program, um, for businesses of, of, is it less than five people, Pat? And, and those businesses had to be income qualify, those businesses had to demonstrate through tax returns or profit-loss statements that they had, um, um, taken a big loss in business between last year and this year, uh, impacted from, uh, the economic crisis. So Pat and Joe Collins, uh, the analyst working for Tony Mazuko, did the bulk of the work reviewing those applications. Joe was able to income qualify, um, those, those companies to verify that they have in fact taken substantial losses. And they were able to, um, award, uh, sixteen small business grants, um, of four thousand dollars or less. And so, uh, we think that that, that was a big win for the, um, business community. In addition to that, after the, uh, the flooding that occurred in town, the general manager asked me to write a grant program to assist people that have been flooded. And, uh, this is a flood, uh, damage, um, grant program where the town would provide up to five thousand dollars to individuals that can, um, demonstrate that they had been impacted by the flooding and can show receipts, um, related to the cost to clean up and replacing certain things. I wrote that grant in a couple of hours using the other grant application, the small business grant as a model. And, um, the next day, the Board of Selectmen voted to approve the grant program. Apparently, there were a number of people watching the selectmen's meeting and what followed was an overwhelming response, um, from neighbor, from not only residents that had been impacted by, by the flooding, but business owners as well. Tony Mazuko is, um, realized that, uh, with so many people interested in this grant program, that it was beyond the capacity of the planning department, Pat and I, to try to manage a grant program of this size. And so he, um, he took that grant program over. Um, it's being managed by the manager's office. He's, uh, he's got a number of volunteers and he's got some are interns, um, and staff that he's working with to respond to, um, these particular grant applications. Both the small business grant program and the flood, the flood grant program, tapped into funds that the planning department and other departments had that were not being used. And in one case, there was, uh, money from DHCD for the Regal Press forty R, um, from the town's adoption of the Smart Growth Zoning that provided the town with seventy-five thousand back in two thousand fifteen. And, uh, an additional hundred and twenty thousand came to the town, um, within the last month to reimburse the town for what they call a density bonus payment for, um, that, that apartment complex being completed. Those funds, um, have been tapped into to run these two programs. In the case of the flood, uh, mitigation grant program, uh, the selectmen have, uh, voted to establish a state of emergency, a declaration of the state of emergency, which allows the town to utilize, um, funds that it has available at, at its disposal to respond to the emergency. And so, um, we have not had any money taken from our operating budget, but there were a few different, um, grants that, uh, program income from the housing rehab program that Steve Costello worked on and, and I finished up. Those funds have been reprogrammed to help provide assistance to residents and businesses that have been impacted by the flooding. Unfortunately, um, being pulled away from our, our normal work for the planning board, Pat and I have not had the ability to focus on the Route One corridor study. And this has me concerned at this point in time because we, we really should be focusing on that and getting ready for town meeting at this point in time. I haven't really been able to look at it for the last month because we've been just really trying to respond to one crisis after another, the establishment of these various grant programs and reprogramming of funds. So I wanted to let the board know that, um, that this is a concern of mine and, um, I'm kind of, we're kind of getting pulled in two different directions. Another point related to this is that we all know that the hospital, uh, was severely damaged by flooding and is closed and will likely be closed for the next six months for them to clean up and get ready to take patients back in the building. I was contacted by General Manager Mazuko and, um, told that I needed to write a hospital overlay zoning district bylaw to provide, um, uh, some flexibility for the hospital in the event that they want to tear down the building and rebuild it. I haven't talked to Tony, um, in a week about this, but the last, uh, email that I received was that I should start working on this bylaw. I haven't and I thought that this was something that was a, a, a policy matter that the planning board needed to talk about and discuss and be informed about before you pulled me away from the Route One zoning and, um, onto another major project. So, uh, one of the reasons why I wanted to, um, to bring this to the board's attention tonight is, is to make you understand that, um, we have had a real full plate, um, with, uh, ongoing applications coming in the way it normally is and processing those and trying to deal with, um, kind of one emergency after the next. Our office is going to be predominantly closed for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for IT training. The next phase of the implementation of the Munis, um, system for the town is an online permit tracking software so that people who want to apply for any kind of a permit from the town, whether it's a liquor license, a special permit from the zoning board, um, a site plan review application with planning, that they would be able to do that permit application completely online and, and paperlessly. So we have a number of departments, the building department, our department, the selectmen, border health, conservation, border appeals, all, um, tied up in training from eight-thirty to four-thirty over the next few days to focus on, um, um, the permit granting, uh, permit tracking software. It's really bad timing, but, um, that's what, how we got scheduled and we'll work with them, um, in that process. Pat and I had a meeting with, uh, um, the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee and one of the selectmen, um, today. And the subject of the meeting was the adoption of an Affordable Housing Trust. We had a good meeting and, and a good general discussion about housing and what the town needs to do in the future to be a little more proactive with dealing with housing issues. And so I think you'll see the Affordable Housing Trust discussion come up and, um, it possibly going on the warrant at the special town meeting in the fall to adopt that bylaw. I've continued to work with, um, David Spiegel on, um, the resolution of our issues related to nine forty Route One, the Yankee Spirits Project and the drive-through denial by the planning board. I've been in touch with a, um, an architect who has agreed to conduct a peer review of the site plan and the architectural plans for the building. This particular architect, um, I've seen his work and so have you. Um, I've seen conceptual plans that he's worked on for the redevelopment of the Analog Device Site and you all have seen his work over in Dedham at the Legacy Place, uh, uh, development that he designed. Um, and so I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to work through these issues and get a better site plan. David Spiegel has agreed to pay the cost of the peer view. I provided the plans to the architect and, um, that's ongoing. The Cap World site, um, right off of, uh, Route One where the ramp goes down onto Route One North, I had a meeting with, um, Matt Smith from Norwood Engineering and they are preparing an application for a site plan review of, uh, that site to redevelop it. They're proposing to, um, tear down the existing building and build a new, smaller building, um, that will serve as, um, an auto dealership and rental car facility for enterprise. I anticipate that that will come in within, um, the next week or two that they'll be submitting that site plan. On the St. Lot that the town purchased, I've continued to work with, um, the Wetlands Trust of Southeastern Massachusetts who will be holding the conservation restriction on that property. They're having a meeting, um, this week, uh, to vote whether or not they will, um, agree to hold and enforce that conservation, uh, restriction in perpetuity. Once we've got that in place, we've already received comments from the state who has to review and approve it. And I think we're in good shape to have the, uh, the state approve, uh, that conservation restriction. It will then need to be, um, voted to be approved by the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen. The board may, may or may not be aware that, um, the site on University Ave where the sand and gravel mining operation has been going on for many years has been issued a cease and desist order by the building commissioner. It was found that they, um, had not, that they are currently not in compliance with their special permit from the zoning board appeals and they are not in compliance with their site plan approval from the planning board. In a decision, um, a planning board decision written by my predecessor, Steve Costello, years ago, back, I think back in two thousand thirteen, it said that the, uh, mining operation was approved for two years as phase one and that the owner would need to return to the planning board and the zoning board to have, um, the second phase of their mining operation approved. Seven years later, they haven't come back, uh, and when that was figured out by the building commissioner, they were given a cease and desist and told that they need to apply for a special permit from the board of appeals and to come back to the planning board for site plan approval. Ironically, the, the words in the planning board's site plan approval decision said that the planning board specifically did not want to have an ongoing mining operation in, in the town's Office Park District. And lo and behold, years later, that's exactly what we, what has happened. This all came to our attention when we were contacted by the abutting property owner, M.S. Walker, who told us that they believed that, uh, the owner, U A V E, Joe Federico, the operator of the, the sand and gravel mining operation, they believed that he had in fact encroached onto their property and cleared trees. And, uh, after some investigation by the building commissioner, um, and, uh, Walker brought in Norwood Engineering to do some surveying, they determined that not only had, uh, U A V E encroached over the property line onto Walker's property, they clear cut the trees and then they excavated the earth material in some areas and actually made the real estate go away. Apparently, Joe Federico had contacted Walker and request and asked them to sell him portions of their land and they refused and coincidentally, portions of the same property now doesn't exist. They were scheduled for a public hearing with the zoning board, um, for last Tuesday night and they have, um, requested a continuance. They're being represented by attorney Hilliard. Attorney Hilliard and I talked and he asked, um, if I had concerns about the project and I, um, I listed off a number of concerns that I had about the ongoing operation. He decided that he, I think he wants to come to the planning board first and get everything ironed out with the planning board and then go to apply, uh, and then go back to, uh, the board of appeals. And so, um, I'll keep you posted on that. Um, I've got to review the plans and, um, this is a, is going to be a project that we're going to need to keep an eye on in the future to protect the environment in the area. That's pretty much all I have for you. I know I just threw a lot of information at you and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about anything that I've just mentioned in my report.
Mr. Shan?
Mr. Chairman, Paul, I just, um, it's a little something different, but it was a Spiegel property, the one where they were parking cars down off, I guess it's the Park Place area now, of, uh, what used to call Vanderbilt. And they were supposed to come to as if they were going to, uh, for some reason, uh, this, I think this may, if they were going to go further and, uh, ask us again to, I'm not sure what they were going to ask us to do, but, uh, if they were going to go forward again, for another extension or something, have they contacted you?
Yes, um, we were contacted by, um, the attorney that attended the planning board meeting back in, in December. And she indicated that, um, her client has asked her to, um, submit a special permit application to modify the special permit to allow that use to continue on a permanent basis. And so, um, we, Pat and I, I think we're contacted with some procedural questions about, um, how to submit plans and, and, um, schedule with the planning board. And so, um, I anticipate that we will see that application come in probably within the next month. Coincidentally, um, we, we've been contacted by, I've been contacted by two or three attorneys asking about the moratorium on open lot storage and asking, you know, what the status was and whether, you know, they could submit plans. And I told them that the moratorium expired in July. The, uh, the Route One rezoning got pushed off until the fall and now the, uh, window of opportunity remains open for anybody that wants to submit another, um, open lot storage application. And so, since it was a few different attorneys that called me, I would, um, not be surprised if we don't see at least one more open lot storage application come in, um, before the, the rezoning goes to town meeting.
Back to that Spiegel property, I think part of the timeliness was there was some landscaping that we were expecting to have. Uh, and of course, the landscaping, the reason we wanted it early was that they would not miss, you know, the planting and growing season and that, that, that would be done early enough where they wouldn't be pushing it off some more, where they'd be planting and it would be worthless because they'd be in the middle of winter or at a time when things aren't growing. So that's what I'm concerned about there on that, on that particular item. And I, it feels like they're getting this, kind of sneaking by us without taking care of those or addressing that.
I think the landscaping is going to be included in the plans that they submit for their special permit modification.
And I guess the question is, would they have time this season to handle it if we went forward? It's getting later.
Yep, I, I understand that concern and we have no idea because they haven't applied yet.
Okay.
Mr. Pachakowski?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Couple of quick questions. Well, Paul, I hope you have your hip boots. If you have the new, uh, temporary conservation agent, you'll be biking around the marsh with, uh, orange flagging tape. As far as, uh, I know you guys, you and Patrick are stretched and between the, uh, outdoor and between the outdoor seating for restaurants and the coronavirus and the flooding and you guys are really stretched and the change in the department down there with the new man coming on board, Al retiring, all that, you got a lot going on. As far as the Route 1 corridor, I would make a suggestion that, and I would volunteer for it, that we set up maybe a subcommittee within the board, maybe two members to work with Ted and maybe iron out some of this. And I would even make the suggestion that we, you know, if we set up a subcommittee that we would maybe invite someone like attorney Hearn, who looks at these things every single day and knows zoning in and out from the other side of the table to offer his two cents into what he sees are loopholes, traps, you know what I mean, what he would look at to make sure that everything's covered and that, you know, we're not putting somebody out of business or making somebody nonconforming. So I mean, my suggestion would be maybe a subcommittee to work with Ted and then bring either one of you two guys in as needed or that. And I had another comment. Oh, I know we talked about it about a month ago and I just don't want to let it pass. And I know we got a lot going, but I just want to make sure that we're good with Mario up there on Sunset or Sunny Side or whatever street is Sunset Lane, I guess. I just want to make sure we're working up there with John to get that, you know, put up that once and for all. I haven't, I don't know if you've heard anything about what's going on up there.
So we are trying to get that to move forward. And I'm going to let Pat fill you in a little bit. He went and did a site inspection last week.
Yep. So as Paul mentioned, we've kind of brought Andy Murphy, assistant town engineer, into the process of trying to get the work completed and done right. I took a drive-by there last week to kind of see what the conditions were and kind of similar to what we saw last year, a lot of improper planted shrubs, dead, dying plants. If anyone remembers, we had, I think, fifty, sixty creeping juniper was supposed to be planted within that raw, that wall itself. Probably less than ten were alive or living. So from a landscaping standpoint, it's very poor. That's something that I think we can, with Andy's help, can contract out and can get done correctly. Obviously, I'm not an engineer, but you know, just looking at the that riprap trap rock wall itself, there's a lot of, just a lot of the rocks were sliding down. A lot of that filter fabric underneath was exposed. So it was just a matter of, some of it had to do with maintenance, some of it had to do with the fact that when it was planted last year, it was planted in the middle of the summer. And so when you go out there in a ninety-degree day and the plantings are just kind of left out there, not in the ground, you know, you don't need to be a professional landscaper to know they're going to die because it's ninety degrees and they're not getting watered and their roots are exposed. So I think going forward, just trying to fix the mistakes or the, some of the effort that went into it last year, you know, definitely remains a project that needs to be finalized and shored up. And so, you know, that's kind of where we are right now. So documented what the conditions are. We have a punch list that was originally from Mr. Glosser. And so probably going to swing back, talk to Andy and see, Andy Murphy, and see about how soon we can get a contractor out there to remediate those mistakes.
Pat, to that point, yeah, one, you know, plants don't grow in gravel either. You know, and that hill is gravel. And are we, I know we pulled the bond. Are we still, did we spend any of that money or is that still money to spend?
Still money to spend. I think it's around sixty-five thousand, something like that.
There's plenty of money to hire a landscaper. Show them the thing and say, look, we want twenty-five shrubs put in there. You know, do what you got to do, get a half, a couple of yards of riprap and, you know, redump some on that or whatever. Let's, you know, I mean, I know you guys are busy and all of that and just, you know, let's just spend that money and get that done. You know, jeez, I, you know, I know. Let's just pull the trigger with Andy. Just get it done.
Yeah, we've had enough of this project as well. And unfortunately, the design that John Glosser submitted to the board and got approved wasn't the best design. And some of the things that we were concerned about from the get-go became true. The plantings didn't survive. When you put, you know, some creeping juniper and surround it with black trap rock, those rocks heat up from the sun and it provides an inhospitable environment for a plant to survive. You throw in the steepness of the slope and water traveling down and it just wasn't a great plan to make it work. Typically, when the board calls a bond to have construction work, you know, contracted out by the town, that's work that we would hand off to the DTW. And so that's why Pat's been in touch with Andy, hoping that we can work with them and they can put this out to bid and get someone to come in. So we'll continue to do that. I really don't think it's a good idea for us to start to cross over that line.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting that. I'm not suggesting that. No, I'm not saying we, I have. But through Andy, you know, we got the money to spend. Let's have him see what he can come up with for a good plan up there.
All right. In response to your earlier comment about a subcommittee, I think that's a tremendous idea and we'd welcome setting that up with some of the board members so that we could funnel some of the work that he's done to you guys for review and comment. He did contact us after the meeting with the board presenting that first round of information. He asked if there was any feedback or comments from the board and we said, no, we hadn't really heard anything. So I think it would help Pat and I and it would be in general a good idea for this project to see if we can get a couple of the board members to work with us, help us out, engage with Ted. The next phase of this project is supposed to be public participation. And you can see from tonight's meeting how challenging it is to get the public to engage on this. But I've got to get together with Ted, set up a schedule from here to October when town meeting is and have some target dates set up for when we want to do these outreach meetings. You know, we were planning like a charrette where we invite people in and go over design scenarios. And unfortunately, we're going to have to do kind of a stripped-down version of that.
I definitely volunteer for that and, you know, meet with Ted and, like I said, I think Dave Hearn or some, you know, somebody else, a stakeholder down there, either a David Spiegel's rep or somebody. And look at the whole Route 1 and see what we want to come up with, what we want to do, what we want to present and keep going forward. So if we have public input, we have at least something to say, this is our vision. You know, what's yours? What, you know? So like I said, I think we should get going on that and that's it.
All right. If any other board members want to jump in, send Pat and I an email. I don't know if the board wants to discuss that further and take a vote, but we're on board with setting up a subcommittee to help finish up that project.
Anything else on the agenda tonight?
There was one more thing that I wanted to alert the board to. This afternoon, it was brought to my attention that there is an agenda item on the selectmen's agenda for tomorrow night that there's going to be apparently a follow-up discussion to the issues that were raised at the annual town meeting related to my position supervising the environmental planner. From what I understand, there's more than one selectman that took issue with the management strategy from the general manager and the reorganization of the departments. And I was told this afternoon that there's going to be a discussion tonight where some selectmen are going to try to shift the management responsibility of the environmental planner from me to the general manager. I was very uncomfortable at the situation that evolved at town meeting. I had three or four individuals casting aspersions about my character, making comments about what I would do in certain situations that was unethical. And I take issue with a small group of people trying to meddle in decisions that had already been made by the general manager, who is the person that has the authority to make management decisions for the town. And so if you have nothing to do tomorrow night and want to tune into the selectmen's meeting and see what happens, but this seems to be a continuation of what took place at town meeting that I thought was quite uncalled for and had absolutely nothing to do with a budget article in front of the voters at town meeting.
Paul, I was, I'm also a town meeting member and I was there. Just, I thought you, I thought your response was right on. I thought you did a great job. And like I had offline, I had spoken to a couple of selectmen. And I think that the way it's set up, it's not going to, I mean, change is hard for a lot of people. And, you know, this configuration of the new operation is going to take time. It's, you know, change is hard. But I think as it evolves and people change and committees change, it may take a couple of years for it to all gel, but I think it's the right way to go to have it all under one roof. You all work together down there. You're, you know, I've always said, and I've known you now for I don't know how many years you've been the planner, you're probably one of the most environmentally friendly town planners that I know. I think that you are extremely environmentally conscious, if that's a word. You know, so there's no doubt in my mind that I think you put the environment first and it comes through in, you know, your discussions and your plans. And I thought at town meeting, I thought you did an exceptional job. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree as well. And I think with the whole conservation agent position coming up, I think that just kind of proves that we're trying to dedicate more time and staff to conservation.
Not beyond the fact that Mr. Halkiotis clearly is qualified and committed to his mission and the parameters of his job. And I'm sure that the reorganization will be effective under his care. So I certainly have no concerns on mine.
So moved.
In a second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Mr. Pachy?
Aye.
Pachakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bamber?
Aye.
Mr. Chan?
Aye.
And the chairman says aye. Okay. Well, good night, everyone. Thank you very much for your participation.
Good night, Al.
Thank you.